We'll open this planning commission meeting for the 16th. And I'd like to start with a real call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Terry?
President?
Commissioner Gill?
Here.
Commissioner Yack?
Here.
Commissioner Spurber?
Here.
Commissioner Mandel?
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Jeff Norman?
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Armando Arnado?
Here.
Open this to a public comment, and this is for any items on the agenda or anything that the public would like to address this commission about, and you have three minutes. No one has a public comment, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. And I'd like to make one comment on that, that on this approval of agenda, item PCN 16030 has been removed. So we'll take an approval of the agenda based on those mentioned.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, striking item number nine.
Second.
We have approval for the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So. We'd like to make the approval of the minutes for our January 19th minute of 2017 for Planning Commission.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve the Planning Commission meetings minutes for January 19th, 2014.
I think we have a correction on it.
I do have one correction on it, on PCN 16049. But I think it is fixed on number eight, the ayes, and they should be corrected for the nays. Item. And it has been corrected in the minutes.
The minutes have been corrected, do we have approval with that correction?
I make a motion with the changes in the minutes.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes have been approved. Do I have an announcement of committee reports?
Vice Chairman Peterson, the one announcement I have is I think we asked you at the study session that to think about your availability for a workshop in terms of some Planning Commission education. Merely, I think, reached out to you with at least one possible date. Not everyone was available for that meeting at, you know, in the middle of the day, and so what I would suggest is that we're going to ask you to have your regularly scheduled meeting on March 16th. We'll do it in chambers here, we will have the regular Planning Commission meeting, and then following that, we can close that and move into a workshop mode and do the Planning Commission education piece of it. And that way, it's on a regularly scheduled date and time in the evening.
And we have one general item on the...
We have one general item, yeah. So, that would be the announcement, is that we'll be looking to do that workshop following the regular Planning Commission meeting on the 16th of March.
Do you want to approve, see if all the board will be there?
Well, it is, I guess the thinking was on part of staff is that it's a regularly scheduled meeting, and so, you know, we would schedule for...
You got anything under information on them?
No, I do not, thank you.
And we'll move on to public hearing, please. And this is PCN 160049, it's a consideration of a setback on Fifth Street property.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Karen Melby, Development Service Managers. Before you tonight is a major deviation application. You'll remember in our last meeting, we made presentation on this, and I'll give you a brief presentation overview. The property is located at 414 Fifth Street. You can see here, it's got the red star on it. This would be Fifth Street, and this is D Street between D and E. What the applicant is requesting is to a major deviation, she would like to place an accessory dwelling unit in the rear property. And because of the shape of the lot, she can't make the 10-foot setback from the alley. This would be the alley street here with Fifth Street here. The setback would be five feet instead of the required 10 feet. With the major deviation, you can go up to 50 percent, so that complies with being at five feet. This also, she'll be able to include three parking spaces, which right now, she doesn't have a driveway, so she has no off-street parking for this project. There is a shed and some other structures, a fence, that would be removed with this project. In the last meeting, there were some questions on the architecture and the building materials. I provided a memo to you that included the color possibility schemes, and then also what the building looks like. Staff is recommending approval of this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commission, have any questions of the staff? No questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here?
I am, thank you.
Would you like to come forward and address this commission?
For those of you that remember me last time, a little spunky, a little...
Probably too outspoken, but I'm excited to be part of the planning process, so it's, I'm excited about it.
So, all I can tell you is, I have put pretty much most of the money I have in the world into this cute little one-bedroom Craftsman Homes, which you can look up, they're on, I think it's Craig Street, but anyways, it's a prefab home. I will have it try to look like as much as I can part of the community with the colors and the roofing and everything I can. My home, I'm blessed to have the major, the first home, it's an old Victorian, so it's beautiful. I can't match it to anything in today's world, so it is what it is. But I'm trying very hard to match the colors and the structure as best I can. I've provided as much information as I can, and I just want your approval to move forward so I can start getting building permits and the plumbing and the water and the electricity to attach it to. It's a one-bedroom, one-bath home, it's a very small, and if you know anything about the neighborhood, it needs some little fresh powder and makeup. I mean, it really does. The neighborhood is adorable, but it could use something fresh. So I'm not asking for anything different, but for those of you that were at the last meeting, you will know the neighbors to the, depending on which side you're looking. It, I'm hoping the house gets a little more redevelopment by the current owners or perhaps new owners. But if you look across the street, I will tell you that I have a, what is my best interest, I think, a single mom, a beautiful, like, about this tall, I don't have kids, but about this tall. She has organic produce delivered to the house. This, this community, you guys keep talking about, you know, redeveloping sparks and stuff. This is good for the community, that's all I've got. That's all I can say. It's, I'm bringing in a brand-new home, I am providing the legal parking spots, and I'm really excited about it. I hope, I hope that it happens. And I'm an open book, so what else can I offer? Information-wise.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Hi, Michelle, good to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for the information that you provided with the color schemes. If, which color scheme would you suggest in the ones that you submitted that would match the existing unit in the front?
Ooh, I haven't picked it out yet, Scott, not gonna lie. I have my brother with me tonight, he's a plumber, has nothing to do with the color scheme, but I suck at that. I'm, you know, I'm a Washington girl. I'm thinking gray. The house is gray, I definitely want to match the front of the house. I want to match what's there to the best of my ability, and also to the left and to the right. To the right is brown, and to the left is blue. I don't prefer blue, but again, if you look at the Google scope of the area, it's, you know, something neutral, I guess, is the best I could answer that with.
Your suggestion is it would be gray?
I'm thinking, yeah, I'm thinking gray would look nice, yeah.
And then another one for the record, what is the reason for proposing a manufactured accessory dwelling unit type construction as opposed to just a regular?
Right, good question, great question. About $43,000.
So cost?
Yeah, and I really wanted, I wanted, I wanted to employ a local contractor, I really did, and I finally had someone just basically set me aside, and I'm by myself, so I had somebody who was kind enough to set me aside and say, "Your best thing with what you have is to go with a prefab." I'd never even considered that before, ever. So that's when I found about Craftsman Homes, and so, yeah, it's the price, which is really wrong word, sucky, because I really wanted to employ our local contractors, but I can't, they, it's, these prefabs, that's it, there's your answer, Scott, less is more.
Thank you. One question, on the south end of the lot currently, there is a building that's currently sitting there. What are you going to do with that building on the, well, I guess it's the east end of that? There's a current building, are you going to remove that one?
So you're referring to the, what is, it's basically a storage shed?
Shed, yes.
So you're referring what's on my property, is that what you're talking about?
That's correct.
Thank you. And I would add, guys, for whatever it's worth, when, the only reason I'm asking, thank you, is because on the other side of my property is a home that, they're living out of those storage sheds. Being brutally honest with you guys, you know, I'm blessed to not have to worry about that. I can afford cable TV, I can afford electricity. I don't know their situation, and I probably shouldn't even bring this up, but apparently they can't, or for some reason, they're not. The reason I bring that up is they're living out of those storage sheds. Mine, based on, I'm trying to do everything in the proper manner, thank you Karen, is we're going to tear it down. I don't want to, I really don't. The house needs some storage, but the city requires XYZ, so I'm going to tear it down. I've already heard that the permit is $35 for the demolition permit, that's what we're going to do. And we're going to pay some waste management for a dumpster and remove it. That will create parking spaces that you guys require. It's funny to me, though, and I'm speaking out just because I can, because if you say no, then you say no. I just, it's, it's very frustrating that the people to the other side are not doing anything right or anything legal, and, you know, so I, I will tear down the storage shed because it's the only thing we have. But thank you for asking, and I just, it's going to be really fun to have it there, and I know you guys are all like, blah, 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 but thank you for hearing me tonight. I don't know what else to say to you, but the answer to your, and I'm sorry, I'm Italian, like, I could be doing this all night long, but I'm not. So, yeah, we're tearing it down, we're going to pay the permit to the city, get the dumpster, and it's gone. That will create the parking. Karen has been amazing in the process, just with the information. I had no clue, I'm all by myself, I had no clue. She's been amazing with the, the information process, so that's what we're going to do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, all of you. No matter what you decide, I really appreciate your time, and this has been an educational process for me, so thank you again, I do appreciate it.
I'll open this to a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience, anyone who would like to speak on this subject? If so, you may come up and ask. Come on up, please, and address it. Address, and then when you're finished, will you please tell our secretary, she'll...
My name is Ken Dubois, and I own a house at 446 Seventh Street. I love the neighborhood, I get the architectural thing, and I'm, when I drive around the neighborhood, which I do a lot, I'm very familiar with it, and she's absolutely correct, there's a lot of houses that are good, there's a lot of houses that need a lot of work, and I, in my opinion, what she wants to do with her property would increase the, it would make the neighborhood better. I don't know how else to put it. I mean, she's not asking to build like a 40-unit apartment building. You know, she's trying to improve a property. And I'm familiar with the house next door to her that she was referring to, I think it has a, like, some kind of a stone shed in the backyard, and it looks very run-down, and that owner is not apparently interested in improving it. And it seems like there's some owners interested in improving their property, some owners are not. She's interested in improving her property, and I think that adds, you know, value to the neighborhood, so I'm in favor of what she wants to do. And don't really have anything more to say about it.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this? Scott, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for a discussion.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I have a question.
I would like to hear from Ms. Melby. Melby, when you looked at this, and obviously, this is our second meeting on the, on the first meeting, and looking through the staff report, you're specifically giving criteria, and I'm looking to make the findings you recommended approval of this, correct?
Yes, uh-huh.
Now, since that time, one of the things was, to make those findings and your recommendations, they were consistent with the following conditions, right? The following conditions that you recommended, that makes you feel confident in recommending, right?
Yes, staff's recommending five conditions of approval.
Let's go specifically to make this finding, maybe you could go over what, what condition number three requires in there.
The condition number three, for the audience to know, is, that's a condition regarding the, the architecture of the accessory dwelling unit, and what the condition states is that the unit must be consistent with the architecture of the existing building. And that would be including as, the colors and as closest to the building materials as possible.
Specifically, it doesn't say as close, it says use...
Well, consistent.
Same or higher quality building materials and color. You're not saying as close, you're saying very specific in condition. So, then we went later into this, into, now, now we're going, and we got some more specifics on, on whether they're meeting condition number three. Now that you've received documents from them, do you feel that they meet condition number three as written there?
That's a hard one to answer. It's, I mean, I'm trying to remember what the building material of the house is. I know the house has, in regards to the roof line, she has a hipped roof with a pit, which a, and a shed roof in the back of the house, which this would have a gabled roof, so that would be different. But in looking at the materials and the other units within the area, the unit, I feel, is compatible with the neighborhood, not necessarily the same architecture.
Specific question that there were, or requirements you've put in here, use of the same or higher quality building materials. You know, so obviously, I could see you made a recommendation that as long as they were consistent with number three, you were fine. But now that we've gotten more specifics, does it meet number three? And so I have some concerns whether it meets this item number three, so can you explain to me why you do think?
Well, the condition, the intent was, at this point, when I wrote the staff report, my intent was that we weren't going to actually look, the issue before you is the setback and not the architecture of the structure, and my feeling was that was something that when the application comes in, we would be looking at the architecture.
And I do understand how we got there, but now we are there, where, where a condition was put in there, and now that we're seeing some more of it because we wanted that to see if it did meet condition number three, the question is, does it meet condition number three? So, anyway, that's the point I've got. And, well, you know, and, and the point I was getting on, is condition number three necessary to make the findings, and earlier, you said you needed those conditions to make those findings. So that's the question where I'm kind of getting in the middle, Karen.
Well, condition number three doesn't necessarily, well, the code does require that accessory dwelling units are compatible with the existing structure. And one of the findings, I don't have my findings memorized, but one of them does say that it's consistent with the code.
Can I follow up a little bit on this, Karen? What I think we might be doing now, because we are already addressing the setbacks, we were not addressing the architecture of this particular property. What I'm saying now, would it be proper, or could it be proper, to strike condition number three?
Yes.
Well, not me personally, I think that you put, put that condition in there for a reason. So, for compatibility and, and for the welfare of all the neighbors and, and specific houses, so.
A lot of times, we put conditions in there that are code requirements, and that is one that's a code requirement, but we put it in there just so that the applicant is reminded that that is in the code, and that was partly that my intent.
My suggestion, while I don't mean to suggest this, but if we can possibly get a motion to strike in condition number three, so that it seems that we're dealing strictly with the setbacks instead of with the architecture of this, then by all means, then maybe we should entertain the possibility of a motion, strike in condition number three.
That would be up to the discretion of this planning commissioner.
So we can discuss this further.
Yeah.
So, in terms of... As written, Commissioner Spurber, certainly, there's a, there's a degree of subjectivity there, right? And I think compatibility, well, the question of whether the building materials are the same or higher, you know, it's difficult, obviously, given the age of the original structure, to, to have the same materials. You know, the, the question of whether, you know, which, which building material is superior, you know, it's, it's a difficult question to address, again, given that, that same factor. I would suggest to you that, I think in the view of staff, we were able to make that, you know, that, that finding, if you will. Having said that, you know, that's, there's a reason why these items come to the Planning Commission, and so this is really, you know, your purview, and if, if you wish to disagree with staff, you know, that is your, that is your prerogative, so, okay.
Is there any further discussion, or maybe we need to move?
Vice Chairman, certainly appreciate the, the discussion tonight with the commission and the applicant bringing back some, some additional information. For me, you know, I, I'm still not able to make findings MD1 and MD4 from last month's staff report. With respect to MD1, I think with the information that we've been provided and the architectural renderings of the proposed accessory dwelling unit, I don't think that it fits within the architectural style or character of the, the neighborhood. With respect to MD4, I think, I do agree that there are a lot of other accessory dwelling units within the area that, quite frankly, don't meet code and don't, aren't compatible as either, but I think, but I just can't support approving a major deviation request of 50 percent, which is the maximum allowed by code, my understanding, for something that doesn't have compatibility with, with the existing, with the existing uses. So with that, I, I would like, I would respectfully make a motion to deny the major deviation request associated with PCN 160049.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second, to move it along.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Let's have discussion.
Or discussion.
Yeah, I would, you know, I am, I'm for this auxiliary dwelling unit, you know, you drive, the applicant wants to remove a shed that's pretty, I think, that's pretty dilapidated and kind of falling down. I think this is a way for that, we're somewhat punishing someone who is trying to do it the right way, coming in front of the board and saying, hey, we, I do want to improve my lot, I do want to make it a little bit better, make it a lot better, I do want to put some parking, off-street parking on my place, and, and get my lot upgraded, and we've heard testimony from a neighbor that's in for it, that is wanting this to move forward to increase it, increase the value of the properties around there. It does fit, what I, when you, when you drive around the lot, it does fit in with other auxiliary dwelling units in that area, and to answer Commissioner Spurber's question, I think probably, you know, like Armando and Mr. Ranelle stated, that is it, could it, could it be an upgrade in units? I mean, I think that's very, I think a lot of people would say yes, and some would say no, some would say yes, say yes, it, there are better materials, so I think before, to have somebody that comes and does this work and do it the right way and not throw up a shed and have people living in it is a precedent that I think that this commission should think about, that when someone wants to do it the right way, that we do push it along, especially when there is support from, with the neighbors. So that's, that's my discussion. Thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second for us. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
How did Commissioner Gaba vote?
Nay.
Okay, so the motion fails?
Nay.
I would like to make another motion. I move to approve the major deviation at 414 Fifth Street based on the facts contained in the staff report that was in the prior meeting and, and the findings based thereof.
I'll second to move it.
I'm sorry, Ms. Point of Clarification, did you have a particular position on condition three?
I, I think we, I can make finding in three. So no, or I can make, I can make a, I don't have any.
You want it to stay in?
I think it should stay in, yeah.
So we have, is that clear, is that clarified? Now, we have a motion and a second clarified. Any discussion?
I did.
Under discussion on this?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I think with respect to condition number three, I, I would like to maybe perhaps amend that to have it include that we go with color palette number 10 as submitted in, in the packet. I think, maybe clarify when it comes into a building permit to make it more compatible. Or I could, I kind of liked Michelle's suggestion with the gray. I think that was number, number six. So just, just a, just a thought.
I might suggest perhaps amending condition three to include a color palette to the approval of the administrator in the event that the materials are unavailable. You could use paint or, or something else to make it compatible with the front structure.
That's an excellent suggestion. Thank you.
Do we have to amend this motion?
Yes.
Okay. Would you care to amend?
I amend the motion. That-
To what he said?
To what, to include the color palette that is favorable to the administrator as part of condition three.
Thank you, Doug.
Does your second still stand?
Yes.
Now we have a motion amended and seconded. All in favor?
Are you done with discussion?
That was a discussion. Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Can I have a vote on them?
I was ready.
Okay.
Opposed?
Nay.
Wait, wait.
Wait.
Let us poll this commission, please.
All right. Let's do, just in order, starting with Commissioner Gaba.
Commissioner Gaba? Yes?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanderwell?
No.
Commissioner Carey?
Nay.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yay.
Commissioner Beaulieu?
Yay.
Commissioner Brock?
Yay.
Commissioner Spurber?
Nay.
Motion has carried.
That's a good item for our two new commissioners to start with, huh?
Yes, it is.
We will now go on to general business, please. Will PCN 160052, a consideration for a possible tentative map?
Vice Chairman, members of the planning commission, Ian Cradon, senior planner, this item is a request for a tentative map for a maximum 17-lot residential subdivision. The name of the subdivision is Sierra Shadows. It was previously tentatively mapped in 2006. At that time, the tentative map timeline was two years between tentative map to a final map, and this expired in 2008. I have the map up here. So to give you some context, this is along Wingfield Springs Road here. Caide Oro is here to the north and General Thatcher slash Florentine is here to the south. Here to the east is, or, yeah, to the west is Baldwin Estates, which you may or may not know is a county island, and then, and then this. The tentative map, as submitted, has 17 lots in it. There is a concern because of the depth of that cul-de-sac, that a wider bulb on the cul-de-sac is required, that's being required by the fire department. That, that widening may, may cause the loss of a couple of lots, just in trying to make that fit. This property is zoned SF6, which is a standard zoning district in the city of Sparks. The, this tentative map is in compliance with both SF6 and its general plan designation, which now escapes me, four dwelling units per acre. So it's in compliance with both of those. The SF6 actually has some interesting allowances in it that allow for a combination, front yard, rear yard, setback combination to allow for some, some variability in those lots. And I talked with the applicant and said, you know, let me sure you're engineers, he lays this out, and you're, you're concerned about losing those lots, that you take that into account and see if maybe you don't necessarily have to with, with that adjustment. So we don't know exactly how that's going to lay out just yet. We haven't got that feedback yet, but it will be incorporated into the final map at either with those setbacks allowing for 17 lots or having to lose a lot or two in order to make the larger cul-de-sac work. The, to, to address some of the other findings that are required for tentative maps, doesn't deviate from the zoning or the, the comprehensive plan. This would add a singular, a single public street into the street network, being kaleidoscope is, I believe, the name of the street that they selected. As far as other agencies that weigh in, we, this application was distributed to District Health, the school district, and the regional transportation commission. Their responses were attached as part of the staff report. They all had comments, none of which were against it. They just had their general comments about the impact that these would have on those, their different purviews. They, the, as part of the final map, they will have to provide, you know, documentation of their access for, for water and for sewer, which are some of the, the findings that are required. Both of those are not anticipated to be enormous issues, but they will have to buy those as part of the final map. School-wise, this subdivision is small enough that their impact on the surrounding schools, even though some of them are at or above capacity, will not trigger year-round or additional- Session, or additional portable building usage. So they're at or above, but not, not dramatically so. They're within response time for, for fire and other services. The, the trip generation is not such that we had to do a full-blown traffic study, so their trip generation shouldn't have a, a major impact. They're, they're outside of the hundred-year flood plain. They don't have a slope problem. This is a fairly flat land. And soils will be, a geotechnical report will be required before any road or building foundations go in, just to make sure we know what the soils look like. They will have to meet the, the standards contained in the code and provide elevations or site plans, not the right word again, floor plans for at least three houses. There's an opportunity for some reduction in that because of the size of the subdivision. If it's less than 20 lots, there is an opportunity for the administrator to require less, but we'll, we'll work that out through them, through the final map process. That's when that will be submitted. And the landscaping will have to be done along-
Wingfield Springs Road is part of the, the general-
That is the extent of my presentation. I'm available for questions. I know the applicant is with here as well, if you need questions.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Is there a connection from the proposed subdivision to the existing path to the east? I think it's part of the Cimarron development.
As submitted, there is not a connection there.
How would a resident of this proposed subdivision be able to access Jacinto Park or Van Gorder Elementary School? It appears to me that, and this is just for the record, that there's, at the northeast corner of Wingfield Springs Road and South Florentine Drive, there's not a sidewalk connection between the existing subdivision to the south of the proposed subdivision and, yeah, see, kind of, I don't know if that, yeah, if that map will do it.
So, yeah, as, as you stated, Commissioner Carey, the sidewalk was extended across the, the front of the subdivision to the south, but because of the way Wingfield Springs did their sidewalks only on one side of the street, there's not a clear connection between that location and, and where the sidewalk then goes, crosses the street and then crosses back. That far to the south, it's, it's staff's opinion that's, that's too far away to, to require any sort of improvements by, by this applicant. Any improvements to the south there would probably need to be a city project to, to, to make that connection, whether it's additional sidewalk or it's crossings. I mean, that would have to be something that would be brought up with, with engineering and, and street staff to figure out how we'd do that. So as of right now, that connection, the, this applicant would be making the connection to adjacent infrastructure. As far as how that connection would happen down there, I don't have an answer for that.
I, I don't have necessarily an, an issue with, you know, we're, we're reviewing the tentative map here. I was just kind of, I know Commissioner Gaba brought it up during the study session, how, you know, a student would get there. I was just kind of mapping it out myself, and it looked like there, there'd be an issue. But from what you're saying is, there's nothing really we can do with this project. I guess if nothing else, I just wanted to point that out for the record, and maybe, you know, in future CIPs, the city can maybe come up with a solution to help, you know, the, the future residents of this subdivision get, get to those recreation and elementary school facilities.
Any further questions? Thank you. Who's the applicant here?
Good evening, Planning Commission members. My name is Cameron Andlin. I'm representing the applicant developer-owner. And wanted to say that our intent is to do this 17-lot subdivision infill project and provide some nice homes for people to, to live in, in this area. I appreciate the City of Sparks staff, their professionalism in working on this project. And I'm available for any questions.
I have one. Do you happen to have three models in line?
At this point, no, we don't. No, our, our desire is to, to do the final map ourselves and then work with a builder and build homes. We're in talks with a couple of different builders, but we haven't, we haven't gotten far enough along to, to have models.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Where the, where the cul-de-sac is in the back, just as a, is there going to be a, that you know of, or Ian, if you can answer this, a connection to that AC path, which is on the, it'd be the west side of, I'm going to say this wrong, Jacinto, is it Jacinto Avenue? There's that pathway with that drainage ditch in the back, that would alleviate a little bit of that-
Yeah, it's a good idea.
-sidewalk on that. I think it'd be maybe lot 10 or lot nine.
Kind of see it there.
Path, yeah. It'd be, I think it'd be nice to have some access to that path, I don't, from the owners that would go down to the elementary school.
Something that we haven't, we actually haven't considered or even thought of. So basically, you're, you're saying that putting a, between the last two, having a path in there. And I don't know how that would affect on the other property line and if that's a-
So that's definitely something we could look at and address during the final mapping process. The concern is that it would have to cross a detention way. So, so, so what that entails, I'm, I'm not sure yet. It also depends on the way that, there's probably an easement of some sort that runs along there. We, we don't know what that easement looks like right now. It just called out a Cimarron Unit B common area. So I don't know if it's a public access easement that, that makes it pretty easy. If it's not that, then potentially it becomes a lot more complicated to try to get that approved. So-
Yeah, just a statement.
Not something you can promise tonight.
Yeah.
No, it was just a statement.
It's a maybe, it's something we can look into.
It was mainly just a statement to maybe get it on your radar, just to-
Any further questions of the applicant? I will bring it to the commission for a possible discussion and a motion.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'll make a motion. I move to forward a recommendation of approval to City Council of the tentative map for Sierra Shadows associated with PCN 16-0052 adopting findings T1 through T12 and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 11 as listed in the staff report.
A motion, second.
Second.
And a second on a discussion? No?
Very quickly, for the record, I'd just like to point out that proposed subdivision, I don't believe will have an adverse impact to the existing schools in the area, and therefore be able to make finding T6. For the record, it looks like Van, according to the Washington County School District, Van Gorder Elementary is currently at 106%. Shaw Middle School is at 91%, and Spanish Springs High School is at 110. This will generate five new elementary school students, two high school students, and one middle school student. I feel these impacts are, are, can be, can be mitigated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we'll move on to the election of the Sparks Planning Commission officers. I will take nominations for chair first, please.
Mr. Vice Chair, I nominate for the chair, Commissioner Peterson.
I have a nomination, we have a second.
Second.
I have a nomination and a second. Shall I have a discussion on this, or shall we move on? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, so ordered. Now we're looking for a vice chair, please.
Can I make a motion?
You most certainly can.
I would like to not make Mr. Van, or Ms. Andrew up.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? So be it. Thank you. Now, we also have a review of the Sparks Planning Commission rules and procedure for possible action.
Commissioner Peterson or Chairman Peterson, we reviewed these-
Commissioner Peterson or Chairman Peterson, we reviewed the study session, and I think we went through them paragraph by paragraph, but more specifically, Senior Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Thornley, did. I think we covered a number of points where perhaps there were some changes. I think Mr. Thornley has a couple of suggestions for you, but really what we're looking for you to do today is to, you know, make any changes you want to make and then, you know, approve your revised or amended rules or procedure.
So you're looking for approval after these changes are discussed?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, under page 5, H3, on the applicant for presentation, can we put wording in there that's gonna be a 15-minute maximum?
Any other suggestions? I don't remember these suggestions being changed, did it come up in the study session?
Yes.
All right, is there any further changes?
Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do, it makes it easier for us. Every proposed change gets a motion and a second and discussion.
Every one of them?
Every single one of them, and that way we don't have to keep a list of them. We know which ones passed and which ones failed, and you don't have to make a comprehensive motion every single time, or you don't get the whole thing hung up on one small issue.
All right, let's take that.
So you'd like me to make a motion?
Yeah, then make a motion.
Okay. So I make a motion under Section 3H, subsection 3, calling a applicant for a presentation, new wording to put in a 15-minute, a 15-minute maximum.
We have a motion, and we have a second on it?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need discussion?
Well, I don't.
Are we okay?
Aye.
All right, okay.
Now, is there any further changes to be discussed?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to look at item on page 4. Item A, we talked about a study session that may occur, and there's been some times that I feel that we should've had study sessions and we didn't, so I... I would like to discuss the idea of changing to study sessions shall be held on Tuesday preceding, unless, let's say, agreed upon between chairman and vice chairman. This would allow us, because there's items sometimes that I don't feel that, there've been some very important ones and we haven't had a study session, so that's a discussion item I would like.
Not making it a form of...
Yeah, let me make it a motion, and then let's discuss it, makes sense. I've made that motion.
May I discuss for a minute that you clarified that for a minute? Are you trying to say that Tuesday will, before our Thursday meeting, will be mandatory?
Unless approved by, or recommended by the chairman and vice chairman.
Captain, no longer that staff can say there's not enough items on to be discussed?
No, no, it's more of items when there are critical items, and we haven't had study sessions in the last couple of years where, some items where I thought it would be much cleaner if we did those items. Study sessions work extremely well.
So we'd be leaving it back up to staff, that were there necessary items?
No, no, it would be, it would, shall unless, unless recommended by chairman and vice chairman, which would be...
To not have it.
To not have it, yeah.
Make it in form of a motion.
That's a motion.
I'll second to move it along.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I think, I think you need the second for purposes of discussion, and my guess is that Commissioner Vanderwell was looking for some discussion, that's why she's second.
Back at discussion.
Back at discussion.
I did it to move it along, so I don't know if, so I'm opening it, so if anybody wants to have discussion on it.
Because we could discuss these items to verify, maybe we should. I agree, maybe we should.
Right, and that's, that's on this item, that's what I wanted to discuss, what people think of that item, and whether we should do it as being, the general rule being habit versus saying may, change it to shall, with the chairman and a vice chairman that are looking at these rather than strictly staff.
All right, then, we didn't, we really didn't have it in the form of the motion then?
No, I did, I did.
Did you? We still discuss it then.
Right.
Yes, so essentially, right now, it's laid upon staff to whether or not we have a study session currently.
Right.
And I think Commissioner Spurber's saying, hey, I think we need to have a study session right on the docket every Tuesday before the meeting, unless the chairman and vice chairman say, hey, look, there's not, I don't think we need that. That's what he's...
But then we would, the chairman and the vice chairman would have to see the items on the agenda.
Which you do.
Much prior, much earlier than we are getting them now.
Why can't we not have them, Charlie? You get them on a Friday.
No, we get them earlier than that. We get them, like, on a Tuesday or Wednesday, we get the agenda.
Yeah, that's right.
Chairman Peterson, if I might interject, I think that there are a few ways for the commission to solve this problem. You could leave this as is and simply express a preference for a standing study session, and staff could, I suppose, acknowledge that and essentially have a standing study session, unless there are cases where there are no items or very few. I think what Commissioner Spurber is suggesting is that the chairman, and with the help of the vice chairman, is essentially responsible for declaring the study session off, and so it becomes a question of whether or not you want that extra step, or whether you want a policy declaration to staff that you would prefer a study session before these meetings in almost every case.
That's correct.
Clark got a very good point, really, because there are times that I, when I first came on board, I was very much against the study sessions until I sat in on a couple of them. And believe it or not, except for tonight, it makes these meetings move a little faster when we have the study sessions on, and therefore I am for that. But the only thing is, is I'm asking now then, does that mean the chairman and the vice chairman have to discuss this before they make that determination, or can either one of them make that determination?
I'm fine with either one of them feeling that we need the meeting. I'm fine with both.
May I suggest, and so they don't have to get together, unless the chairman is not gonna be available to make that decision, that the vice chairman make it?
Yeah.
Okay, now you have to put it in the form of a motion.
Well, we have a motion and a second. We already got it on there.
Yeah, have we?
Call the question.
Yes.
I'm okay with that.
Have you got this all down there?
So, I'm gonna read it back to you guys, just to make sure.
Would you please?
Language would be, study sessions shall be held on the Tuesday preceding a regular meeting unless otherwise decided, you wanna use that word, by the chair and/or vice chair.
Correct.
And there are no further discussions, I will call for the vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that's so ordered.
I have a couple, if the commission has no remaining changes to be made.
No remaining changes here? All right, Dr. Flor is yours.
I can't make a motion, so I need you guys to either go with me or tell me you don't like my ideas. On page 7, the tie vote section.
Right.
We talked about this in the study session, but where it says tie votes shall result in no action and the item shall be forwarded to the city council without a recommendation. Tie votes are a technical denial, and in my view, it makes for a cleaner record if that is reflected in what is forwarded on to the, to the city council.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
Section 8 of the rules and procedure, in case of a tie vote, that, reread it to say tie vote shall result in a technical denial and be forwarded to the city council.
Second.
And a second on a discussion. I will call for a vote. Any in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Changes to be made.
Thanks, guys. Let's move on to a bigger change. Sections 10, 11, and 12 on pages 7 and 8 deal with conflicts of interest, and I told you at the study session that I would propose language that better reflected state law on this issue, but in discussion with some of the other people in the office, I think probably the better approach is to scrap them entirely from the rules and procedure for the commission, with the recognition that state law controls on the matter, because state law is constantly changing, and so rather than try to stay ahead of the curve on what that language is gonna say, I think that's probably the better approach. So I would like to see those removed. And frankly, as, all three of them, and frankly, as part of that, gifts, loans, and other financial interests are covered by chapter 281A as well, and so I think you could lose Article 5 in its entirety as well. So, 10, 11, 12, and then Article 5.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. So, Doug, so you want a motion to remove all of that, but then in the motion to have it directed that it follow NRS 281?
Well, you could do it that way, or we could all agree that it does and it need not be mentioned.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Scrap section 10, 11, 12, and Article 5 of the Sparks Planning Commission rules and procedure.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion.
I'll just put it, Mr. Chairman, I'll just put it on record that with the understanding that NRS supersedes, and we follow that to the law. Thank you.
No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that, changes is carried. Further changes to be discussed? If not, when the review of this planning commission rules is over, we'll move on to the recommendation to mayor for a commission, or to serve as an alternate on the Truckee Metals Regional Planning Commission. We have one alternate, we're supposed to have two, so we have a vacancy on that, so I'll take a nomination for...
Can we start first, alternate? Myself, okay.
Fred, I'd like to make motion, Scott Carey.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion.
I'll discuss the motion. I certainly appreciate the nomination. Unfortunately, with my professional obligations, Wednesday nights don't work for me. I don't think I'd be a very good second alternate, so I respectfully...
You'd be a better first alternate?
I would be an even worse first alternate, but thank you.
Okay, with that, yeah, I'm gonna vote, okay, let me rescind my motion.
All right.
Doesn't want it.
We'll table that motion because he doesn't want it.
Second, so we can pull it out. So then, at that point, who do we have available yet?
Well, we have the two new members, and it maybe...
And who we have as two new members are the only two that aren't either on it or...
Right, right.
Well, then maybe the first question is, who would be interested?
Right.
Which one of you two would be?
To make it clear, maybe they don't understand, regional consists of the boards, three from the Sparks Planning Commission, three from the Reno Planning Commission, and three from the county Planning Commission, and they do the regional issues that go before. They discuss many of the same issues that we discuss here, and many in Reno and many in the county. So if any of you would like to give it a shot, an alternate, by all means, sometimes only one. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
We always slip a point.
For the point of clarification, as I understand it, we have the three commissioners that serve, we have the first alternate, this would be the second alternate, so basically you'd be batting fifth. If there were two commissioners absent, the second alternate would fill in.
And as I say, I have only said it once in a year and a half that I've been on this commission, so...
How often do they meet?
What's a month?
Every other month right now.
Once every other month.
Month, and sometimes it could even be longer, but, so it's not that many normally. Our trouble is, quite often, it's kind of a last minute, and we're scrambling to get a member, that's where we've both done it, so it's always good to have somebody else.
What do you nominate me then?
I nominate James.
I'll second that.
We have a nomination, we have a nomination in about three seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So be it.
There you go.
I, now, we'll open this again to the public comment, anybody wishes to make a public comment, it's free to come up. If not so, then I wanna make comments from the commissioner, and I'd like to make that first comment, but she's gone. I wanted to say happy birthday to Karen, but she walked out, so will you tell her for me that we all said happy birthday to her, and many more? All right, any other comments from the commissioners?
I would like to make a comment. We have one of our newest commissioner, or city councilmen, Don Abbott, here, and I really appreciate Don coming to some of our meetings and doing it, and welcome and congratulations.
And with that...
Comment, if I may, sorry, I'll make this...
Sorry, but you always drag along.
I just wanted to, I had an opportunity earlier this month to participate in a public workshop for the city's arts and cultural strategic planning that they're working on, and I wanted to invite my fellow commissioners and everyone watching around the world on Sparks Centennial Television right now, that this Saturday, February 18th, at Red's Golden Eagle Grill at Golden Eagle Regional Park, from 10:00 to 11:30, there'll be a workshop, and then there'll be another opportunity Wednesday, March 8th, from 1:00 to 2:00, online through Facebook Live, I'm not sure how that's gonna quite work, but if you're interested in arts and culture and you'd like to share your input and ideas, I'd encourage you all to get involved with the city's arts and cultural strategic planning effort. I think it's a big quality of life thing and helps meet some of our objectives in the master plan. Thank you.
Any other newcomers? Then I have it in the authority to say we are...
There you go, there you go.
I'm in my first meeting.
That we go on can be dealt with in such a manner, but there are a few chemicals that will really affect it, go right through the suits, and that's when we have to use a fully encapsulated vapor protective Level A suit. It's extremely important that we train together with the city of Reno, we do it at least once a month, and that cooperative effort in a small valley...